Specifically, the hiring of a superintendent and discuss some contract negotiations. But we do have public comment. If there's anyone from the public comment who would like to speak.
Mrs. Rogers, I just need to tell Mr. Rotolo if you could let Mr. Taylor into the meeting. He's on it, but he can't. I don't know if he's having trouble getting audio or.
I just invite. There he is. Okay. There he is.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Taylor. Chris, do we have people who want to speak this morning?
It looks like we do have one hand raised. Jessica Verdignillon.
Okay, great. Hi, Jessica.
Bring her in.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
At first, I want to thank everyone for the hard work on their reentry plan. I think it's very comprehensive and explanatory. The only question that wasn't addressed was before and after care anywhere on the plan. Is morning care going to be available for parents who have to still try and go to work on these days? And especially the educators in the district who have children in the school district? Is there going to be any before or after care with the YMCA?
Mrs. Rogers, if you want, I'll address questions.
Thank you. That'd be great. Thanks, Amy.
I just want to clarify for everybody who's listening that what was released yesterday was the instructional schedule. We still have to release our whole comprehensive plan on the restart and recover to reopen the district. So what was released yesterday was really just the plan for students being able to attend school in the building or virtual options. But we have a plan that's going to cover things like athletics, before and after care, meals, transportation, all types of things. And that is actually going to be reviewed at the board meeting on Wednesday. So some of those details are still being worked out. The plan is evolving, but it's substantially done. But I would just suggest anyone who's got questions beyond the school schedule that was released yesterday, that I would refer you to Wednesday's board meeting where the entire plan will be reviewed and we'll be able to take questions on it then.
Okay.
Hopefully, it makes sense.
Yes. Thanks, Amy. Thank you, Jessica. Anybody else, Mr. Rotolo?
Yes, looks like we have three hands raised at this point. Next is Nicole Tierney.
Hi, all. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much for all you are doing. I know you volunteer and you've done an amazing job. I have, though, written some emails and expressed concerns, and other than one return email, I haven't had the benefit of a response. I am so proud of our students for their voices being heard. I 100% support anti-racism. I'm a volunteer on many fronts in the community and advocate for oppressed populations. But I was also disturbed by a few outlier messages in the protests and asked for a simple denouncement of hate. I am not sure if there is a discrepancy that by denouncing hate, it would impinge somebody's First Amendment speech. But again, this has caused me great pain. It's making it difficult for my child. And I'm just wondering if we could simply do that and move on because I would very much like to put this to rest, continue to support my board and move forward with no, you know, again, not taking away anything from the rally and the march. But to the extent that taxpayer dollars went there, it was involved with the Board of Ed. Every child, whether you, not you personally, but somebody perceives it as hate, feel okay. And mine doesn't right now. And I asked just for a simple denouncement of hate. And instead, it seems like the leaders of that march are getting single-handed communication from all of you, when I don't even get a return email. And I'm hurt, and I want our town to move forward. So I hope that you can advise me on that.
Excuse me, Mrs. Rogers. I don't believe that you got the address of the speaker who just spoke. Can the speaker please state her address?
Yes, I've lived in Belford for 36 years. My current address is 25 West Park Avenue, Belford, New Jersey, 07718. I have a child that attends Middletown North.
Thank you.
Okay. You know, I don't know how much I should address about that comment. I will say that the Board of Education believes in the First Amendment right of all people. And I will say that the Board of Education, of course, denounces any hate or hate speech. But, you know, we do have to be very careful about infringing on people's First Amendment rights, and we will continue to do so. And I'm sorry if any member of the public has caused you pain with their thoughts. But certainly, the Board of Education does not have any signage or any communication that would be based in hate. Who's our next?
Yes, next would be Sue Griffin.
Hi, good morning. I also have questions regarding the opening of school. I'm not sure if you'd like me to raise them now or I'm better off waiting until Wednesday?
Griffin, as I stated, if things that are beyond what was issued in the letter, it's most likely they'll be addressed as we review the comprehensive plan. So, you know, I'll leave that up to you. But we start a presentation on Wednesday of the plan. And we'll be taking more questions and reviewing things in more detail at that point. This was strictly the instructional schedule.
Okay, then can I just talk to the timeline? I'll leave this.
That's up to Mrs. Rogers.
Public comment, she has her three minutes. She can ask or say what she wants.
Okay, go ahead.
The timeline, I believe Wednesday is the 29th, and you're asking for a response for people to decide on remote only by August 4th. Is it possible that we submit all of our questions to you prior to the 29th via email or however? Because that's a very quick turnaround to decide on remote only. And a lot of people need to make decisions based on childcare that will affect their finances for the year. So whatever information that you can give us, give the public prior to that so that they can make appropriate decisions for their family and have those decisions properly laid out so that they can not affect their finances any more than necessary would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
I'm trying to think how to advise. I would say send the email. And if the answer, if the question can be answered, they'll be answered via email. If not, then you'll have to wait till Wednesday. But thank you.
Okay, next is Ellen Boyle.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, everybody. I have a daughter who attends High School South. Has there been anything brought up as far as an instruction schedule because she attends a trade school?
I believe that they're still working out the details of the vocational schedules.
Yes, we are working. Right, we are. We are working with the Monmouth County Vocational and Other Schools to with their schedules as well. But again, it's still not 100% there. I mean, as Mrs. Griffin was saying, that the timeline is short for parents to, our timelines are short to put all this together too. So it's literally a day-by-day exercise. But yet, we are working with the superintendent of the county vocational schools, all of the superintendents in the county. Actually, through the executive county superintendent to try to coordinate as best we can to accommodate those schedules.
Okay, is there any date as to when that might be available?
I'm sure we're going to be speaking more about on Wednesday.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I just have a last name for this next speaker. His name is Ramsey. If they could give us their full name when they come on, that would be wonderful.
Hello, if we could have your name and address, please?
Looks like they're muted, Chris.
Yes.
Your mute button.
Chris, can you unmute the person or not?
I don't, I can only ask them to unmute. I can't physically mute this. Let's. Yeah, let's move on for now. We'll keep them. Okay, and we are going to move on to Laura, and don't quite have a last name. So if they could give us their last name, that would be great. Oh, there's a last name.
Laura Apt.
Hi, Laura.
Hi, I'm at 16th Lady River Boulevard. So I thank you all. I know this is a monumental task to take on. I do have to say that I'm a little disappointed in the amount of in-person instruction that the kids are going to receive. I know there are challenges, but there are many other districts in the state that are providing many more hours of in-person learning. And I guess my question is, why is Middletown able to do that even, you know, given that we are going with these like A, B cohorts? It sounds like the children are going to need to spend a lot of their day wearing masks anyway because of social distancing. And if that is the case, there's no, you know, there's no requirement that says they need to be six feet and wear masks. So I guess my misunderstanding is because the tone of the letter seems to me to be very, you know, it's, you're going to have to wear a mask. If an individual class can't do the six feet apart, you're going to have to wear a mask. Why can't we bring the kids back in for a longer amount of time wearing masks? I know it's not ideal, but eight and a half hours of in-person instruction for my incoming second grader is just really upsetting to hear. I also wanted to know, and I know this probably has to come from the DOE, but there have been revised by the CDC. And I hope that that will, those guidelines will be taken into consideration. And then my other question is, why are the kids only going a half day? I know it had something to do with lunch, but I don't understand why they can't eat lunch in the classrooms, especially the younger ones. I know you meant they'd grab and go, but are the little ones going to school for four and a half hours and not eating anything? I just, I don't understand why they can't be in there the extra two days. And then I guess my other question would be, why is the Wednesday virtual for everyone? Why can't we do an alternating Wednesday with children? Like, I just want to get my kid back into school as much as physically possible.
Amy, I don't know if you want to speak to any of that?
We do understand there are going to be districts doing things in different ways across the state. Different districts have different capabilities with their facilities. They have different class sizes already. So there is going to be some disparities between the in-person instruction depending upon the district. You know, we've taken the last several weeks to look through this. And this is the plan that, you know, we're looking to do to start the year. But, you know, I will also call everyone's attention to the fact that it's a phased-in plan. So maybe starting the year with these, the two cohorts going two days and two days with the all-day virtual on Wednesday. You know, the plan is to step through the process and increase the instructional time in the building and with the target being eventually getting back to, you know, students being in school in some semblance of a regular, what we call our regular schedule, five days a week with extended days. The lunches do pose a challenge for us. You know, we don't have the ability to have everyone social distanced and have their mask off and eat, just like the same reasoning is why the restaurants have not been opened, you know, yet here in New Jersey. So, you know, we face the same challenges in the school district. So at this point, that's why we went with the shorter day where, you know, we are hoping, again, you know, as the timeline was laid out, place where we can have full days and we can start serving lunch in school and extend the time. But, you know, that is a challenge for us to be able to do that. You know, masks not a, they're a help, but, you know, if you can't achieve the social distancing, you know, it becomes a problem, you know, to just have everybody sitting on top of each other, even with wearing the mask. You know, there's just, it just become, it's not, you know, it's not a situation that we were looking to, you know, have in all of our classrooms. We have, you know, classrooms that have, you know, at the elementary level, you know, up to 25 students in them. So, you know, between that and, you know, adding the teacher into the room and, you know, sometimes a co-teacher or paraprofessionals, it's, you know, it's just not something we have the space for. And, you know, we do understand other districts are able to do this a little bit differently than us, but they have, you know, different class sizes. Some of their schools are, have more excess capacity. They're able to spread out more. You know, this is what, you know, we've been working very hard to try to come up with as much in-person time as we can. And we think that, you know, taking this approach and phasing, phasing the students back in is a responsible way to do it and, you know, a way to give all the kids, you know, some time in the building if they choose, you know, at least to start the year. And, you know, again, we're going to be going over this more on Wednesday as well. But, you know, we all want to see every, you know, we all wish this wasn't going on. And, you know, we're trying to do our best to, you know, be in compliance with all the guidelines and recommendations while, you know, trying to maximize the educational instruction and experience for all of our students and keep everybody safe.
Hi, this is John. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I'd be honest, I don't know if we have the right people on. I know, I'm offensive. I don't know if we have a lot of everyone on to answer questions about the reopening plan. I don't, you know, is Dr. George or Kim or anybody else on? I feel like we're answering a lot of questions for a lot of things that will be discussed next week. Not that what we're saying is incorrect, but I just want to make sure that, one, we're talking about it maybe, I think we're supposed to talk about agenda topics in this first part. And secondly, we have the right people on to answer some of these questions so people get, you know, consistent answers.
Well, this public comment is for any topic, but I agree. I mean, we aren't giving a whole presentation on Wednesday. And, you know, this, again, this letter that went up was just for the schedule.
Not only that, but I don't know if we have, like, all the people on.
No, we don't. We don't.
I don't mind answering. So I think we should clarify that because I want to make sure that people get the answers that they need. And these are some very important questions about vocational school, about, you know, the timeline of when decisions about virtually to be made. So let's, let's also sort of maybe caveat or qualify or statements that some of the folks, not, I know Amy, you're really working on and very speech that we were clear on that.
If I may, Mrs. Rogers, I think Mr. Little makes a great point. Well, first, Mrs. Doherty is doing a phenomenal job of stepping in and attempting to be transparent and respond to the public's questions. As indicated, this is a special meeting for the purpose of personnel and the superintendent's search and appointment process. The public comment period.
And also want to point out, folks ask questions. We can always get back to make sure, we obviously record these so we can come back and make sure if there's any other clarifying points. So I don't want to discourage people from asking questions. Just want to point out.
No, I don't disagree. I would much rather present this in the context of the presentation that we're doing on Wednesday. And it's, not that we don't want to answer questions, but I think that, I think that once everybody hears the whole plan and the reasoning that went behind it, it will clear up a lot of these questions. I'm not in disagreement of that.
So, Mrs. Rogers, what I was going to suggest was, to Mr. Little's point, was perhaps any questions about the school reopening, kind of take them under advisement. The administration can respond to them or incorporate responses into their presentation later in the week.
Great. Chris, how many more do we have who want to speak? We only have about 10 more minutes left.
It looks like we have the three hands that are, that have been raised. And I think one of them, Laura Apt, has commented already. So if we'd like to, we want to save her until the end and get to those who have not.
Yes, so what I would like to do is extend public comment to hear just those two speakers who haven't spoken yet and then to end public comment there.
Okay, so move on to, I just have a last name. It's.
I think I need to make, Chris, I think I need to make a motion for that, right? I'd like to make a motion to extend the public comment time to hear the two callers who have not spoken yet.
Mrs. Rogers, we haven't gotten to the 30-minute mark yet, so we can go ahead in the ordinary course right now.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Okay, last name is Roush.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, there. How are you guys?
Good. Can we have your first name if you don't mind?
Sure. My first name is Christina.
Great, thanks.
And so my question is, I know you guys, so I just want to understand what you guys just said. So we're, we're going to be giving you our questions, and the questions that we're posing today will be addressed on Wednesday. Is that how it's going to work?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I'm, I guess the virtual learning part of it, so yes, there's going to be two days in school, but trying to understand how the virtual learning is going to be set up. There, I guess it was laid out in the letter stating that there was going to be streaming classrooms instead of the format that was done in the spring where it was more like there was a classroom for us to go in, do our assignments on a flexible schedule. And that's a, that was a concern for us on multiple levels. One, streaming the classrooms. I'm unsure of how that's going to be effective in grades K through three. I know that sitting my kid in front of a computer screen for four hours watching a classroom is not going to give them the education that I feel like they deserve, especially at such a young age. So I definitely want that to be clarified. Like, is there a way for me to opt out for streaming the classroom and still be a part of virtual learning? So that was one segment of my question. And then the next part of my question was, you know, there were a group of parents who were, you know, trying to be creative and trying to come up with ideas to help their kids grow and continue to grow through this really tough time. And so we were forming like little groups of children that we felt, you know, if they were in the same grade, they would be in the same neighborhood, and they've been like courting together already, that we could keep them together. And on these virtual days, you know, divide and conquer. Like, you know, I would take one, one week or whatever it was, however it worked for the families, to keep my kids with other children their age on the virtual days and be able to do a more flexible virtual learning so that they're getting what they need every day, five days a week. And what we ran into is with no requests and, you know, keeping it separate. I understand for like the ease of your planning, that it's easy to just, okay, these letters are going here and these letters are going here. But if you could be a little bit more flexible with that when there's groups that are trying to stay safe and they're trying to continue learning, if there was, I don't know, any sort of, I don't know what the word I'm looking for is, any more flexibility there, that would be great. So those are my two questions, mainly the virtual learning and is there an opt-out to streaming classroom for privacy and so on? And then the flexibility of forming the pods, forming these little groups of kids who want to continue to learn. I have a first grader and a second grader, so it really affects me, like those little, those, the littles, I feel like, need a little bit more attention and the plan really didn't give us options for them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Kate Farley.
Hi, thanks very much for taking the time. I just had a quick question. I won't, you know, get into the stuff for the plan. I understand we're going to discuss it in a lot more detail on Wednesday. But I guess my questions were sort of twofold. First being, do you intend to have enough time for a public comment on Wednesday to allow everyone who wants to speak to be able to speak? And, because I know that, you know, was sort of a problem the last meeting. And my second question would be, you know, if we, if our questions that we have are not answered through the presentation and we raise those questions during the public comment period, will you be prepared to provide answers then? Or will we, again, be told, submit them and we'll do our best to respond to them? And then, you know, many of us feel like these questions go unanswered. So those are just.
May I respond on behalf of the board?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mrs. Farley, a good question. The board operates in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act by setting aside a portion of the meeting for public comment. The board has a policy which it has adopted in accordance with state ethical guidelines and rules and regulations whereby the public comment period is 30 minutes. Each speaker gets three minutes. So that isn't compliance with the law. The board can, at its discretion, extend that time however it may and/or does have the right to, limited to that period within the confines of the policy that it has adopted and that it agrees to operate in accordance with its own very policy. To the extent there are questions that cannot be answered just based upon the availability of information, the uncertainty of information, because this is an ever-moving target, as you may have seen by the recent press conference from the governor, somewhat changing the requirements for school reopening, allowing parents the option for remote instruction as well as confidentiality, collective bargaining agreements, et cetera. So some questions may not be able to be answered on the spot. However, to the extent that there isn't enough time, members of the public are free to contact the superintendent of schools by phone, by even person to ask those operational questions. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Okay, so now that we're done with public comment, I would like to make a motion to adjourn to go into executive session for matters of personnel, specifically the superintendent hire and contract.
Thank you. Mrs. Rogers, just add that minutes will be taken and released to the public if and when the need for confidentiality no longer exists and action may be taken by the board whenever we convene in a public session. Thank you.
I need a motion, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. Thanks, everybody. Abstentions. Thanks, everybody.
...
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
I need a second.
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 Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstentions.
Have a good weekend everybody.
Yes. Bye.
Bye.